Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, April twenty-third. In compliance with state law, city councils' special and regular meetings are held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this meeting to order, and Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Soltis?
I am here.
Councilmember Porter?
Here.
Councilmember Hartsock?
Here.
Councilmember Hardjauzen?
I am present.
Councilmember Simomo?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Here.
Mayor Wagner?
Here.
We have a forum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista. If everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance, here the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all. Approval of the agenda. I know that we will be removing new business item number one. We did not have the interview today. Are there any other changes, Regan?
Just the note on the minutes in the consent agenda from the in in the actual packet, it says April twenty-third minutes that you'll be approving, but it's actually the April ninth minutes. Councilmember Hartsock found that, so thank you.
Thank you, Regan. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been completed. Let's move into reports of commissions. Economic Development Council? Do you not see anybody? Youth Council, Katie, welcome.
Thank you for having me. Welcome. Oh, almost dropped that. Anyway. So, we just had our street cleanup, actually, on Wednesday of last week. That went pretty well. There was a lot more trash than last time we cleaned it up, so I was a little disappointed, but it just keeps people held accountable when they see other people cleaning up the streets, so over time, it'll become less and less. We're planning on having almost full attendance at the joint commission meeting on April thirtieth. So, we're really excited about that, coming up with like a PowerPoint slide for it, just a quick overview of what we've done. And then, we went over the rest of the calendar, and no changes were made. And lastly, we went over some ideas for recruiting for next year. We have five seniors currently on the council, so that's half the council we're losing, but last year it was over than half, so improving. And that's all. Thank you for having me.
Anybody have any questions for Katie?
Yeah.
Yes, Beth?
So, yeah.
Hi. So as far as recruiting, is there anything that we can help with? Or do you guys come with any?
I think, actually, coming to the Constitutional Convention next week might be helpful for Kentwood to recruit more people from Kentwood. We're outnumbered currently on the council, so.
Okay. Is that this Friday?
Uh, twenty-six.
Twenty-six, so it's this Friday.
Okay, this Friday.
All right. I will be there at eight.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
And just check in at the front.
Um, yeah, I think you need a guest pass or something, so.
Perfect.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Arts Commission? What are you here? Equity, Cultural, and Social Justice? Human Services? Parks and Recreation Commission? Connie, welcome.
Wait, Monty's there. Wait, eight.
Oh, Monty's there. Oh.
Oh, yeah, she's like.
I didn't see Monty on here, sorry.
I was slow. I'm so sorry.
Nope.
May I have like two seconds of your time?
Yes.
Okay. I apologize. I'm slow today. So, hi, everybody. Good morning. My name is still Monty. Two things. We met with the Kent Family and Youth Services last time, and it was a phenomenal visit. What an amazing group of people that what they're offering for our citizens here in Kent. Amazing, amazing sight visit. And the only other thing we have is that we will be starting to review forty-seven applications that we received for our funding cycle. So, out of the forty-seven that we have, we're gonna start reviewing in May. We only have hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, and the ask is eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, so we will be very, very, very busy, and that is all I have for all of you. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Monty? Thank you, Monty. Sorry I didn't see you up there.
No worries. Have a good day.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Now, Connie. Sorry about that.
Well, I can fill all the time that everyone else did not use tonight, but I won't. I'm Connie Elliott with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and good evening, councilmembers, and Mayor Wagner. We have two months that we're reporting for. We weren't here last time, last month, so in March, we got report that the soccer fields are ready for spring soccer, and that baseball registration had closed with three hundred and seventy-four participants this year, so that was very exciting. There's the baseball season starts next week, and the soccer season wraps up next week. Kickoff meetings also started for Covington Days, planning with right now, there's over fifty vendor spots already confirmed, so that's really exciting. The commission received an update from Chuck McDowell from the DCG watershed on the Jenkins Creek Trail Project. We saw a couple of different options for the trail, which was very exciting to see movement on that. And in March, the commission recommended that council approve the acquisition of a small parcel of land near Red Robin, adjacent to the Jenkins Creek Trail down there, so that was our business in March. And just last week, in April, we planned commission, our participation in the Joint Commission Workshop coming up next week. Laura Morrissey and Mackenzie Woods will be attending that and representing the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I'd like to call out a couple notable items from the staff report that we got last week. Mowing has begun in the city's park system, so getting all the parks and open spaces ready for citizens to enjoy themselves. And our aquatics team held a spring break lifeguarding class to help some of the nearby municipalities with their lifeguard programs, so that the beaches in the area could be fully staffed and open with lifeguards. So that was a great project by our our aquatics team. And looking forward, there's an Arbor Day celebration on Friday at Jenkins Creek Elementary. Probably, you already know about that, so hopefully, we'll see some of you there at that event. And then, our May meeting will be a park tour. We're gonna start at the Wingfield Open Space, where we'll get a planning update for that 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 spot, followed by tour of Friendship Park, the Jerry Creek Skate Park, and Founder's Park, where we'll be able to see the newly completed construction. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Connie? Then first, nope. Perfect.
Great.
Connie, thank you.
Thank you.
I see Riley showed up. Would you like to give the Arts Commission?
Yes.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, so sorry that I was late.
Stuff happened.
Okay. Good evening, councilmembers. I almost called you commissioners. What am I thinking?
Been called worse.
All right, great. I'm up there. Okay, so I'm gonna start off with the most interesting and new piece of business for the Arts Commission. As you guys know, we had two installations in the Covington Park, and one of them was vandalized. I don't know if you guys are aware of that, but I think it's kind of funny, because when we were considering the specific piece, we were worried about people throwing a rock at it and it cracking, and then low and behold, within a month, guess what happened? So, I'm trying to be positive about it, but it was really discouraging for me, not gonna lie. But we were gonna have like an inauguration ceremony that was canceled. Sounds like the city does have insurance on the piece. Unfortunately, the whole thing will need to be redone, because it's not something you can just patch. It's a blown piece of glass, so you have to redo the whole thing. But we have insurance, so they're working on the process of claiming the insurance claim, and then having the artist redo the art. I don't know where we go from there, though. We haven't had a meeting since this has happened, so I don't know if it's smart to reinstall the piece, knowing that within a month it was damaged. So that's our number one concern right now, that we're gonna have to work through and figure out. And obviously, we'll have more to report as we get time to talk about it in the first place. Other than that, we still have the a few different ideas in place. The Karma Collective idea, which is like a mural of karma throughout the city of Covington. That's something we're still researching. We are working on another utility box wrap call, so I believe we're gonna have the art in June, and then we'll we'll present it to you probably in July with our top picks. And then, we're still working on the rotating art program and the mural program, but nothing new to report. The only other thing is we are going to be in attendance at the Makers Market, so we'll hopefully see you guys there. That's all I have.
Thanks, Riley. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a great evening.
Yeah.
And Planning Commission, David, welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. We had, I have a short. We had two significant agenda items for the Planning Commission meeting for April eighteenth. The first one was we further reviewed the draft comprehensive element, plan element for capital facilities and utilities, and in particular, quote, "the appendix X with a detailed capital plan and planned budget information from the city staff and its partners." This was really accounting 101 of the city's capital utilities plan and budgets, and you'll be seeing that in the future when you go through the comp plan. We also had our first review of the comprehensive plan element for transportation. Planning staff, Casey Bradley from Burke Consulting, and Don Vandren, Covington Public Works Director, were all present during the reporting of both comp plan elements, and expertly answered all of our questions. We have one agenda item for the next meeting, which is going to be on May sixteenth with the Planning Commission, and that will be for the draft comp plan transportation element. We're gonna go further into it and get all the particulars regarding that. We're looking forward to going through that comprehensive plan element. It's the ninth of nine elements, so we're coming to the end of going through all of the different elements that we have on the comprehensive plan, which is yay. It's been a while. Some future activities planned. I think you already know the Planning Commission will be participating in the inaugural Covington Joint Commissions Meeting next Tuesday, May thirtieth, starting at six thirty PM. This is a real opportunity, of course, to have cross-commission discussion and collaboration. We're really looking forward to next week. Glad to provide you this brief status update for the Planning Commission. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for David?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here, David. All right, that concludes our reports of commission, and let's move into public communication. First is end-of-session legislative report. Holly? Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Let me pull up my screen here. Okay, can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Great. I am Holly Sinabria, state lobbyist for the city. It's great to be with you all tonight to provide a report on the 2024 state legislative session. So, I'll plan to cover four topics in tonight's update. The first is an overview of the 2024 session. The second will cover the outcome of the city's legislative priorities. Next, some additional legislative issues worth highlighting, and I'll wrap up with some next steps as we prepare for the 2025 legislative session. So, just to provide some context, the legislature operates on a two-year cycle that aligns with the state's biennial budgets. This year was the second session of the 2325 biennium, meaning it was the short session of the two, lasting sixty days, beginning on January eighth and ending on time on March seventh. And for a short session, the legislature focuses on adopting supplemental budgets by making amendments or adjustments to the previous budget that passed in 2023. And this includes the operating capital and transportation budgets. There were a little over eleven hundred bills introduced during the 2023 session that were not passed into law and were carried over for consideration during the 2024 session. And in addition to those bills that carried over, an additional one thousand five hundred and sixty bills were introduced, and of these, the legislature ended up passing three hundred and seventy-six bills into law. The Democrats continue to hold the majority in both the House and Senate. And a new dynamic this short session was the introduction of six initiatives to the legislature. The initiatives are bills that are sponsored by Washingtonians and are ideas submitted to the legislature for their consideration, and the legislature has three options when presented with an initiative. They can adopt it as presented. They can adopt a different version, and both the original and the legislature's version goes on the ballot, or they can take no action and the initiative goes directly to the ballot. And for three of the initiatives, the legislature chose to adopt the following as presented: vehicular pursuits, which allows an officer to engage in a vehicular pursuit if they have reasonable suspicion that someone has violated the law. This is essentially a rollback of the legislation passed last session. Parental rights around medical, academic, and disciplinary information on their children, and prohibition on the state local income tax, which local governments do not impose in income taxes, the income taxes that are now prohibited. For the remaining three, the Climate Commitment Act repeal, the long-term care opt-out, and capital gains repeal, they chose to do nothing and will let the voters decide in November. So with that, really quick recap, I'll share a bit about the budgets. So, as I mentioned, there are three budgets the legislature focuses on, which are the operating capital and transportation budgets. The short session is dedicated to passing supplemental budgets. So, moving to the first budget, the operating budget is the largest of the three. It funds all state agency operations, with the largest expense being the K through twelve education system. The February revenue forecast, which is the forecast that was used to develop the supplemental budget, predicted a 1.2 billion increase in state revenue beyond the level expected when the biennial budget was adopted. The supplemental budget allocated an additional 2.1 billion, bringing the biennial operating budget to 71.9 billion, and I think it's helpful to recognize that the biennial budget was 69 billion and the supplemental was 2 billion, so that's how small of a budget the supplemental is compared to the underlying budget. One significant outcome of the supplemental budget for many local governments is the elimination of the 25% cost share requirement for jurisdiction sending new recruits to Basic Law Enforcement Academy, SOBIA. That will take effect in the new state fiscal year, starting July one. It also includes thirty-four million allocated to local governments for homelessness and housing programs and services. Moving on to the capital budget, this budget funds public and nonprofit construction projects excluding transportation, and structurally, it's funded by bonds that derive from a portion of the operating budget. And the supplemental budget is 1.3 billion, bringing the biennial capital budget to 10.3 billion. The additional capacity primarily comes from the Climate Commitment Act, federal funds, and the Model Tox- Toxics Control Account, and there were very limited remaining bonding capacity for the supplemental. Because much of the revenue comes from the Climate Commitment Act, much of it is not available until January 2025, and is contingent on the failure of Initiative 2117. There was 72.5 million allocated to local community projects, which is the category the city has received funds through. The size of awards in a supplemental year is traditionally very small, and this year was no exception, with the average appropriation being 372,000. Notable investments in the supplemental capital budget include 127 million for the Housing Trust Fund and over 100 million in behavioral health facilities around the state. The transportation budget funds the, obviously, state transportation system, which includes highways, ferries, active transportation, transit, and all transportation-related state agencies. And this was by far the most constrained of the three budgets, and budget writers had the greatest challenge agreeing on this budget. The supplemental budget allocates an additional 1 billion, bringing the biennial budget to 14.6 billion, and most of this new spending is directed to a handful of areas. That includes cost overruns on two mega projects, the 520 Bridge and I-405, fish barrier removal, capital improvements to ferries, and highway preservation. The new spending comes from federal funds, Climate Commitment Act revenue, and advanced Move Ahead Washington revenues. And traditional transportation revenue sources, like the gas tax and license permits and and other fees, are down by eight percent since the biennium began. So, a lot to unpack here, but this is just a really quick rundown of the supplemental budgets that passed this session. So, to start out with the city's legislative priorities, and we'll start with transportation, the first being State Route 516. A few months prior to session, the city identified a funding shortfall in the State Route 516, 185th to Jenkins Creek project, and we notified the the delegation right away and worked with transportation budget leadership as well. And as I mentioned before, the legislature struggled to identify additional funding for projects that were already in progress, but ended up increasing in costs, which were basically every project that they had listed. So, great news, though. We were able to lock in another 1 million needed to complete this project. This is definitely major news and a and a major win, especially for a supplemental budget year. For the widening of State Route 18, right as session began, Wash Dot shared that the cost for Highway 18 project had jumped from roughly 640 million to as high as 1.8 billion. This was just one of the several mega projects around the state that has seen project costs escalate. So, budget writers made it clear that there was no money available to fill the funding gaps. The city's request, along with the Southeast Area Legislative Transportation Coalition, CLTC, was to retain all funding for the corridor and provide clear direction to Wash Dot to keep the project on schedule. The supplemental budget does retain all funding previously awarded and specifies that it is for the Phase One of the corridor. So, Phase One will widen the highway from Raging River to the Tiger Mountain Summit, install a median barrier, and construct two roundabouts at Izquahobar Road. The budget also provided specific guidance to Wash Dot to have the Capital Projects Advisory Review Board, so CPARB, provide recommendations on the procurement method. The intent of this review is to provide assurance that the procurement methods are achieving the best possible bids. And further, if the bids received exceed the engineer's estimates by more than 5% or 10 million, Wash Dot is directed to report this to the legislature and pause the contract process. The city, along with other CLTC members, received a briefing from Wash Dot a couple weeks ago, and CPARB is currently reviewing the procurement plan for the Highway 18 project, and they expect to issue an RFP in August for design and build, so that's that's a good good start. And then, without getting too far ahead of us, I will note that the Phase Two of the project has design funding, but will need construction funds, and the current estimate for this is 1.2 billion. So, lastly, maintenance and preservation. As as transportation revenue continues to decline and project costs continue to increase, maintenance and preservation investments at the state level have certainly taken a backseat. And there was a modest investment made this session to ensure Wash Dot could proceed proceed with preservation needs over the next several months, so 260 million was allocated to highway preservation in the supplemental budget. However, additional transportation revenue sharing for local governments remains to be seen. The last transportation package passed in 2022, so that's the Move Ahead Washington package, did not include a gas tax increase, which means there is not a sustainable revenue source to keep up with what the legislature has prioritized over the last several years. And the legislature continues to consider ways to implement additional revenue sources, including a per-mile fee program. There are other efforts, including a tire tax, as well as a retail delivery fee. There are many who think another transportation package will be developed next session, and that means additional revenue will need to come from somewhere. There were two studies around the concept of a road usage charge included in the budget. One is due at the end of this year, and the other is due at the end of 2025. So, it will be important for cities to remain vocal about the need for a fair share in whatever revenue sources identified. All right, Jenkins Creek Recreational Trail. The city requested 2 million during the 2023 legislative session for Jenkins Creek Trail to create recreational connections between Jenkins Creek Park and SoCo Park. And the final budget in 2023 included 250,000 towards the project. And in an effort to increase the investment made in the 2023-25 budget for the trail, the city requested 750,000 this year. And during a supplemental budget year, funding availability is pretty limited, and as I said, this year was really no exception. And the average appropriation for local community projects this session was 372,000. So, in the end, there was no additional investments made for Jenkins Creek Trail this session. For public safety, the legislature continues to grapple with how best to balance police accountability with public safety. Within the Democrat Caucus, some legislators want to advance more police accountability and reform measures, while others would prefer to modify previously enacted reforms and invest in hiring more law enforcement personnel. And this divide only allowed for really modest public safety proposals to pass into law this session. As I mentioned previously, the legislature adopted Initiative 2113. This allows police officers to engage in a vehicular pursuit if they have reasonable suspicion to believe that a person has violated the law. I'll also note that the budget includes funding for the state to hire a consultant to collect, review, and analyze data related to vehicular pursuits and to compile a report. And that report has to include recommendations to the legislature on what data should be collected by law enforcement agencies throughout the state, so that moving forward, there is consistent and uniform information when evaluating policies on pursuits. And as I mentioned, due to the differences of opinions within the majority, there were several bills that failed to make it through session. I'll just note a few. The Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs and other law enforcement advocates requested increased funding to hire law enforcement officers. House Bill 2231 proposed providing cities and counties with a credit against the state sales tax to fund officers. And then, there was House Bill 2211, or Senate Bill 6076 was the companion, and that would have authorized cities and counties to councilmanically increase the sales tax to fund public safety. Both of those failed. Even more modest proposals, such as Senate Bill 6242, which would have permanently eliminated the 25% city cost share for sending officers to BIA, did not advance. And as I mentioned previously, though, this change was temporarily funded in the budget. I'll note, two bills that did pass this session that aim to support law enforcement and increase recruitment and retention, House Bill 2311 requires the Criminal Justice Training Commission to create a task force on first responder wellness and develop a 40-hour training program and peer support network. And then, another one worth highlighting is Senate Bill 5424, which allows law enforcement officers to work part-time hours. Lastly, affordable housing. Covington, like many communities, have found it challenging to keep up with the deadlines established in several of the housing and land use bills that have passed last session. And unfortunately, there was no interest in extending any of these deadlines, so no substantial progress was made there. As for meeting housing housing targets, we were able to work through clarifications internally with King County, the Puget Sound Regional Council, and Commerce. Maybe not entirely clear just yet, but progress has been made on this front. The legislature made significant additional investments toward housing programs, including 127 million for the Housing Trust Fund and 34 million to local governments for homeless and housing programs and services. And these amounts are in addition to the investments they made in the first half of the biennium that are still not fully utilized. Additionally, the legislature made a tweak to the use of the 1406 funds. These are the credit against the state sales tax that the city receives for affordable housing. And previously, those funds could only be used on housing of 60% AMI or below. So, Senate Bill 6173 allows those funds to be used for 80% AMI or below if the housing development is intended for ownership. And then, House Bill 1892 created the Workforce Housing Accelerator Program. The program will be administered by Department of Commerce and provides loans to eligible organizations to assist with the development of low-income housing, defined as 50 to 80% of the area medium income. And this is an important program, because the Housing Trust Fund focuses on providing housing for individuals with income less than 50% AMI. So, a lot to take in for that one. All right, just to highlight a few other areas. So a lot to take in for that one. All right, just to highlight a few other areas the legislature tackled this session. Uh for behavioral health, uh House Bill twenty eighty eight extends liability protection to co responders. Uh they passed a bill to allow twenty three hour crisis relief centers to serve children. That's Senate Bill fifty eight fifty three, and there is also funding within the operating budget to support this effort. They passed Senate Bill sixty two fifty one, which allows behavioral health administrative service organizations to serve as primary system coordinators within each of the ten regional service areas and convene regional partner um partners and stakeholders to coordinate on the behavioral health crisis response and suicide prevention system. And it also requires nine eight eight contact hubs to enter data sharing agreements with regional crisis lines that include a real that include real time information sharing. And the operating budget includes funding to support this effort as well. For the property tax cap effort, there have been many attempts at reforming the state's cap on property tax growth. This year, the primary vehicle was Senate Bill fifty seven seventy, which was a carryover bill from twenty 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 three session. Uh the bill would have removed the one percent cap on property tax growth and tied it to inflation, capping it at three percent. Um the bill made its way through the Senate Committee and was expected to be voted on the floor. Uh but a large push of opposition came the day um it was to be brought to the floor and it was stopped in its tracks. I'll also add that any type of legislation that has tax implications and receives public resistance isn't likely to move, especially in an election year, and that's exactly what happened with this bill. Um there was a lot of optimism that it would make headway this session nonetheless, but nothing is nothing is predictable during the legislative process. So that's where it ended up, unfortunately. And lastly, there was no new divergence uh from the Public Works Assistance Account. So with that, uh and with the conclusion of session, legislators are back in district. And my advice is to always begin with gratitude. Uh legislators put their lives on hold for sixty days to do the necessary work of adopting budgets and refining laws. And recognizing their sacrifice goes a long way. So whether you see them when you're at an event or around town, please go out of your way to thank them for serving the city and our state. Uh we are working on organizing a time for the delegation, uh the forty seventh delegation to attend a council meeting in July. So that will also provide you all with a time to share your appreciation. And we also had all three legislators attend the Jenkins Creek Park groundbreaking, so that was great. Uh next, there are several state agencies that are charged with implementing grant programs for various purposes. Over the next several months, application windows will be opening up and the state agencies will then make recommendations to the twenty twenty five legislature on what projects should receive funding. And to be competitive for any funding request in twenty twenty five, it is my strong recommendation that the city apply to applicable grant programs this year. Even if we're not successful, it demonstrates that the city is taking advantage of these opportunities before coming to the legislature for a direct appropriation. And then between now and the legislative session, there will be a campaign cycle uh where the entire House and half the Senate is up for reelection. There have been several announcements of legislators not running either because of retirements or otherwise. Uh we will also have a new governor and several other changes to statewide elected elected office and and potential impacts to state budgets if any of the three initiatives pass. Uh there are a lot of unknowns about next session, but what we do know is the legislature will have to develop new biennial budgets. And we want to be prepared to take advantage of any opportunities that arise through that process. And as part of our preparation for the next several months, uh my job is to help the city develop an interim action plan and next steps to continue to elevate top priorities and prepare for the twenty twenty five twenty seven biennial budget development and the twenty twenty five session. And before you know it, the twenty twenty five session begins on January thirteenth and will be the first year of the new biennium. And to prepare for that session, we'll need to update the city's legislative priorities. So with that, I'll just say it's an honor to advocate for the city and thank you for the opportunity to be a part of the Covington team. Happy to take any questions or if you think of any at a later time, um you know where to you know where to contact me. Thank you.
Well, first off, Holly, thank you for all your hard work that you've done for us, not just this past year, but for all the years previous. You are a wonder to work with, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
But do you have any count?
Yes, Sean. Um thank you, Holly. Uh at the last uh regional fire authority meeting, uh at the beginning, each of the cities gets to provide an update on what's happening there. And in Toquilla mentioned that they had recently received a grant from the state to build tiny houses. Um and I think there are only two, Seattle and Toquilla, that have these. Um so one, can you tell, do you know anything more about that? And then two, um in the report, he mentioned that the legislature is concerned that there aren't that many tiny houses around the state and might be looking at uh additional legislation in the future to, I don't want to say mandate, facilitate the development of tiny houses in more communities than just those two. So I don't know if you heard anything about that.
Yeah, I so I haven't heard about the tiny homes in Toquilla. I can definitely find out about the grant program that they received it from and send over some information. A- as for tiny home and and I guess incentives for next session, I definitely could see that being the case. Housing in general will continue to be part of the conversation and that includes lot splitting conversation that we we've continuously been hearing about. And the legislature has been grappling with um along with the transit oriented development push. So there will be a lot of, I'm sure a lot of housing bills and that tiny homes is definitely included. But I'll find out some more information specifically about that grant program.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, Holly, thank you very much for being here tonight. And again, thank you again for everything you do for us in Olympia.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Next is, we have two proclamations. If council could join me in front of the dais. All right, Connie, thank you for being here tonight. We have two proclamations to give to the Parks and Recreation Commission and thank you for representing them. The first one is whereas in eighteen seventy two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. This holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of topsoil by wind and water, moderating temperatures, cleaning the air, producing life giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, building material and countless other wood products. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a secu- a source of joy and well being. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Covington, do hereby proclaim April twenty sixth, two thousand twenty four as Arbor Day in the City of Covington and urge all citizens and businesses to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect trees and woodlands and plant trees to benefit current and future generations. And Connie, I'd like to present this proclamation for to you and to the entire Parks Commission. Thank you for everything you do. Is there anything you'd like to say?
No, thank you so much. We really appreciate this and we are excited for the event on Friday.
I will be there. Thank you. And then our second proclamation. Whereas swimming and aquatic related activities play a vital role in good physical and mental health. And whereas safe swimming facilities like Covington's Aquatic Center provide healthy places to recreate, learn and build self esteem, confidence and a sense of self worth, which contribute to the quality of life in our community. And whereas it is vitally important to communicate water safety, information and provide water safety programs to families and individuals of all ages. Since water safety education prevents drownings and water related injuries. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Covington, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand twenty four to be National Water Safety Month in the City of Covington and encourage all citizens to join in this observance by attending programs and pledging to be safe swimmers at the Covington Aquatic Center during the month of May and beyond. And I'd like to present this proclamation to you as well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there anything you'd like to say on this?
No, I think we could all be very proud of our aquatics program and this is a great honor, so thank you.
And thank you for being here, Connie. Have a great evening. All right, thank you, everybody. Next up is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to City Council, not the audience or staff. Comments should be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants permission to speak, press unmute in Zoom or dial star six to unmute by phone. Notice campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate at City Hall or during council meetings, including public comments, is prohibited by state law, RCW forty two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody approach the dais or raising their hand, this public comment period is closed. We will have a second opportunity towards the end of our meeting. Next is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C seven. Please note, there's a scribner error and the minutes are April ninth and in the packet it says April twenty third. Is there a motion to approve? Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has passed. Thank you. There is no new business item number one. Moving into new business item number two is to consider a resolution calling for the inclusion of a proposition on the August sixth, two thousand twenty four election ballot to authorize a sales and use tax to fund City of Covington transportation improvements and maintenance in consideration of the voter pamphlet explanatory statement. Regan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh recently, council directed staff to bring back a uh sales and use tax ballot measure for the August sixth election. Uh if council, if that is not adopted tonight, we will miss the August sixth deadline. I would have to look at a a further date if that's something council wanted to do. The attached resolution in your packet is a legal instrument used to indicate council's intent to impose and implement the transportation improvements and maintenance through an imposition of a two tenths of one percent sales and use tax. So if if approved, the additional tax of two tenths of of one percent would be two uh twenty cents for every one hundred dollars spent on taxable items in the City of Covington. Revenue generated from the tax is restricted to paying costs of transportation maintenance and improvement projects. The tax will be imposed for a ten year term. It's also important to note that collection of the sales tax will not begin unless until the City Council takes action to repeal the twenty dollar car tabs that are currently in place. And we're happy to address any questions council has.
Thank you, Regan. Does council have any questions?
Uh I'm sure most of us know this, but can you explain what a taxable item and a non taxable item are? Or um better clarification so we understand exactly what this tax is going to be on.
Uh pretty much it won't be, uh you won't be taxed on groceries, um but other items you will be.
Yeah, and then what is our?
In certain services, you wouldn't be taxed on as well.
Okay, what is our current tax rate in the City of Covington?
What's that?
What is our current tax rate in the City of Covington?
Uh April first, it went up to eight point nine percent due to a King County uh point one percent tax.
Okay, so this would raise our tax rate to nine point one. And that would still be one of the lowest in the county.
Yeah, I think eighth lowest.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else have any questions for Regan? All right, um before us, Jennifer, did you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Before us, we have a resolution and then an approval of the expla- explanatory statement. But first, we'll do the resolution. So before us, if council wishes to approve the resolution, calling for the inclusion of a proposition on the August sixth, two thousand twenty four election ballot to authorize a point two percent sales and use tax within the city in substantial form as attached here too. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, um I'm always in favor of our public letting us know of our, know what they think on these things. I think it is important uh in our process, but I also think it's important that our residents know exactly what we're doing and knowing that by doing, by bringing this forward, they're know that we're going to get getting get new construction done on roads. We're going to get things fixed. We're going to maintain the things that they have wanted us to do. But not only that, they're not the only ones paying for this. This now will put the burden on the thousands of people who come into Covington daily to spend money at Fred Meyer, at Costco, to go to Firehouse Subs, to go to Applebee's. Those tax dollars that we can bring in that will help to make sure our roads are serviced and in good working order. And instead of us having to piecemeal portions of it, this will be a benefit to everybody because it's not just the residents of Covington paying for it. It's everybody who comes into Covington, who shops here, who eats here. It's making it more fair for our residents.
Thank you, Joe. Christina, speak to your second.
Sure, just to piggyback off of what Joe said, um we have looked high and low, left and right, and the streets that are degrading faster exponentially, actually, with each year. Um need attention. This traditionally has not been um a favorite of the residents. But I think today our streets look different than they did many years ago. And I think the last time this went on a ballot measure was maybe almost close to ten years, I believe. Um, everything has increased. We are expending our budget. And not only, I I would I would say it's not, I would I would say it's not just not only our Covington residents paying, but I would say it's mostly other residents paying. And in addition, our Covington residents paying, us included. Um I'm proud of this. I think it should pass. I'm really proud of the flyer that the city has made and that we have vowed to eliminate the twenty dollar car tab. Not only that, um we will not collect until we eliminate. So I, from from a standpoint of the council, I think we've done everything we can. Um we hear the, we hear the citizens, they're they're complaining about the roads and we have to do something about it. And this is, in my opinion, the best option for both our residents and our roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion?
I was just gonna add, thanks, I'm bad, um agree with everything else that's been said. And that if this passes, it provides a more predictable source of funding for our. for our roads. We have traditionally been pulling from the general fund to supplement our, our road maintenance and construction. And this sales tax would be dedicated specifically for transportation projects and help eliminate the need to be subsidizing it from our general fund. So I think it's important for the public to recognize it. This creates a more predictable source of funds that we can then plan against. So I'm all for it.
Thank you, Sean. Beth.
I, I was just going to underscore the element and I appreciate staff's work in figuring out how we could put on the ballot our intent of reducing or rather eliminating the TBD. And I think that, you know, there's a lot of public distrust in government at any level. And I think that's one way for us to, to put it out there and saying that we stand behind what we want to do and, and we're vowing to fulfill that in. And so I really appreciate the way the, the resolution is written and in the way that we're moving forward on it this time.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution, calling for the inclusion of a proposition on the August sixth two thousand twenty-four election ballot to authorize a point two percent sales and use tax within the city in substantial form and attached here too. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Next is the second part of this new business item is the to approve the explanatory statement in substantial form as included herein. As the explanatory statement for the sales and use tax proposition to be included in the voters pamphlet for the August sixth two thousand twenty-four election.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Christina, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Okay, Debbie, would you like to speak to your second?
I, I agree that the statement explains everything the way we've been explaining it to our residents. And they seem to very well understand it. So it's good.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to approve the explanatory statement in substantial form as included herein. As the explanatory statement for the sales and use tax proposition to be included in the voters pamphlet for the August sixth two thousand twenty-four election. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Next is new business item number three is consider appointments to the pro and con committees for two thousand twenty-four TBD sales tax ballot measure. We advertised for this and we have two people that, for each, two people for the pro commission committee and two people for the con committee. First is up to make a motion to appoint the two people that applied for the pro committee. Is there any questions from council? Beth.
Could I just ask how many people applied?
Yeah, just the four that are on there. It's two for each.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to approve Matthew Paris and Scott Hannis to the pro committee?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Debbie, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Sean, would you like to speak to your second?
Nope.
Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? And it's been moved and seconded to appoint Matthew Paris and Scott Hannis to the pro committee. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Next is to appoint the con committee. We have two people that applied, Leroy Stevenson and Philip Jones. Anybody have any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to appoint Leroy Stevenson and Philip Jones to the con committee. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
I'm glad that we have folks that stepped up to do this work and it's always important to hear both sides and let people think about the issue thoroughly before they make a decision. And I'm confident these folks will write a fair and accurate
Thank you, Beth. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
I second that.
Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Been moved and seconded to appoint Leroy Stevenson and Philip Jones to the con committee. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The con committee has been approved. Thank you. Next is new business item number four, consider a resolution to seek Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office grant funds for Jenkins Creek Trail Project. Ethan.
Hey, let me see if I can share my screen. All right. This is a good evening, council. This is a, for the Jenkins Creek Trail Project. This year, the city is completing a Jenkins Creek Trail Master Plan and preliminary design for this segment of the trail. Which is anticipated to connect Jenkins Creek Park to Washington five sixteen. To apply for Washington State Recreation Conservation Office Grant Funds, the city must adopt the attached resolution. This is a real high level, just basically saying that the city understands that there's a project that it's applying for funds for. The grant award, if we're successful in obtaining the grant award, it would come back to the city in a grant agreement or the council again. In this particular grant project, we're trying to size to a two million dollars of which this grant program could cover fifty percent of or a million dollars. What is up on the screen right now is the current kind of plan for the project. It's still being right sized to as cost estimates come in and whatnot. But this is just kind of a concept. You can see that some of the trail sections that would be targeted would be new, kind of coming from Washington State Route five sixteen up behind Red Robin towards behind Home Depot towards Jenkins Creek Park. And then some of the trail sections that might be targeted would be renovation type trail projects for some of the old probably nineteen ninety era asphalt trails that are in Jenkins Creek Park that have been patched multiple times, but are really at the end of life. There is an acquisition piece which would be on the Multi Care property. That's still being negotiated, but it would likely be an acquisition of a trail easement. And Multi Care has been a good partner and working with us on that right now. So that's, that's all I have for this side. Any questions, let me know.
Does anybody have any questions for Ethan? All right, so before us is to potentially adopt a resolution in substantial form. Is that attached here too to seek Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office Grant Funds for Jenkins Creek Trail Project? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I just appreciate the efforts moving forward to, to augment our park and recreation opportunities. And RCO grants play an important role in that. Appreciate the, the effort behind that.
Thank you, Beth. Debbie, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you. Well, it'd be great if we win this grant and we could just halfway there financially. Step in the right direction.
Thanks, Debbie. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Been moved and seconded to adopt a resolution in substantial form as that attached here too to seek Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office Grant Funds for Jenkins Creek Trail Project. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you all very much. Next is new business item number five, consider a resolution to seek Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office Grant Funds to expand the Covington Community Park. Ethan.
Yes, so this is a similar item to the, the last agenda item. Again, it's a resolution to support pursuing grant funds for a park project. This particular park project is an acquisition focused project that's having a community park. It targets a property approximately five acres in size. That's shown up on the screen as kind of the upper left corner of the park diagram. Currently used as a single-family residence. It does about the western boundary of the park. It spans an area between the park and Little Sues Creek. And then the vision is to expand the park boundary and to add to both the natural area and developable area of the park. Acquisition would happen first and then there would be a process to kind of update park design as to what would actually be sited on this area. But, you know, probably near the creek, it's probably logical to, to cite some sort of restoration and natural area protection in that area. And then there's perhaps an opportunity to cite some park maintenance and operations facilities in the area where there's some, some buildings. And then the large part of it would be available for some sort of active use, kind of be, to be determined. One thing that is notable about this property, it is outside the city limits of the city. It's outside the urban growth boundary of the city. We have had conversations with King County and their permitting division and there's nothing that prevents the city from purchasing it or even operating it as a park. But for the foreseeable future, we would have to go through permitting at the county level. And I think it's something that we could say it's desirable to bring within the urban growth, urban growth boundary and city limits at some point in time. But that's long process with no certainty at this point in time. So it's not part of the acquisition plan. Similar to the other resolution for consideration, this is necessary for applying for RCO grant funds. Again, if the city is successful in getting a grant award, those grant agreements would be coming back to the city council for approval. There's no direct costs with these grant applications. This particular resolution would be actually used to support two different RCO grant applications. Potentially each funding up to a million dollars or more, depending on the grant program. And happy to take any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Ethan? Beth, Debbie.
Thank you. Thank you, Ethan. Is the million dollars per grant or total between the two?
It would be per grant.
Okay, thank you. And can any of those funds be used to purchase the land?
That's what they would be used for.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Christina.
Just a comment. Perhaps we could have a dog park.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, it looks like a big chunk.
Yeah.
But then I also, my thoughts, if you've ever tried to park in that tiny, tiny parking lot during any sort, sort of sports activity, it is nearly impossible. Just food for thought, but maybe we can, if possible, it looks like that site is far at least a hundred thirty feet from the creek. To expand that, that would alleviate a lot of parents' you know, frustration with parking.
Yeah, I, I think there's a long laundry list thing that we could put in there. So.
It was just a topic.
But yeah, those are some of the things that, you know, the park could potentially support or the property could support.
Beth.
Not necessarily applicable to this resolution, but can we get RCO grants for trying to get that part into our boundary at some point from the city, from the county? Or is that like, is that a legitimate use of a grant at the fut, in the future?
I'm not sure that's what RCO grant funds really could be used for.
Okay.
They're usually acquisition or development grant.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else have any questions for Ethan? There is the potential to adopt a resolution in substantial form. Is that attached here too to seek Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office Grants to expand Covington Community Park? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
It costs us nothing to apply for a grant that will possibly give us a million dollars to expand a park. It's nothing else that needs to be said about that.
Thank you, Joe. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
That park has brought lots of smiles. Let's make it bigger.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to adopt a resolution in substantial form. Is that attached here too to seek Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office Grant Funds to expand Covington Community Park? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you all very much. Next is new business item number six. Consider an ordinance to amend the two thousand fifteen, two thousand thirty-five City of Covington Comprehensive Plan Parks, Recreation and Open Space Element to adopt the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand forty-two Parks, Recreation and Open Space Prose Plan as subsequent, subsequently amended by reference. Wow. Selena, sorry, my apologies.
No, good evening, council and mayor. So thi, this is just coming full circle back for council decision tonight. So this topic before you is the two thousand twenty-three docket whereby we can update our comp plan. And while we are currently in a comp plan update that will be from two thousand twenty-four to two thousand forty-four, this docket item actually amends our current comp plan, which is the two thousand fifteen version. So why, why is that important? Because right now we have a prose plan that was adopted by the council in two thousand twenty-two that is not aligned with the information in the two thousand fifteen comp plan. And so in order for us to move forward to ensure alignment for the programs Ethan's doing and to also further evaluate our ability to update our park impact fee, those two items have to be aligned. And so we had the option of one, waiting, right, to do this as part of the two thousand twenty-four update, which will come to the council in December of two thousand twenty-four, or do this update now, which then allows staff that time to get underway on that work. Otherwise, we'd have to wait until after December two thousand twenty-four. So this item originally came to you in February to be put on the docket. The planning commission studied this item and held a public hearing, did a CEPA evaluation, and ultimately recommended that the council adopt the ordinance tonight to update the current two thousand fifteen parks element to adopt the prose plan by reference. The other piece that I'll just add to that is that this work that we did under this action actually also updates the two thousand twenty-four draft that's going forward because we're going to continue just to adopt the prose plan by reference. Because the timing of those two documents, the comp plan and the prose plan are also not aligned. So, and in order to keep ourselves aligned and to keep our friends in the Parks Department nimble and ability to come up for grants, we want to do this by reference.
Thank you, Selena. Does anybody have any questions for Selena on this? All right. Thank you, Selena. Before us is the potential to adopt an ordinance amending the two thousand fifteen, two thousand thirty-five City of Covington Comprehensive Plan Parks, Recreation and Open Space Element to adopt the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand forty-two Parks, Recreation and Open Space Prose Plan as subsequently amended by reference. Too many S words. Sorry, my apologies. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Debbie, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It keeps us in sync.
Thank you. Sean, would you like to speak to your second? Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to adopt an ordinance amending the two thousand fifteen, two thousand thirty-five City of Covington Comprehensive Plan Parks, Recreation and Open Space Element to adopt the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand forty-two Parks, Recreation and Open Space Prose Plan as subsequently amended by reference. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to new business item number seven, consider authorizing the city manager to execute Johnson and Johnson Settlement Participation Form. Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This may look fairly similar or familiar to all of you because I've come back with multiple participation forms that look a lot like this. As council will recall, we've discussed this in multiple other meetings. And over the past few years, states, cities, counties across the country have been litigating with pharmaceutical distributors, manufacturers, and pharmacies to help combat the opioid crisis. And so as part of this, council approved the one Washington MOU, which provided the framework for how distribute, how funds, settlement funds would be allocated in Washington as settlements came through with the different organizations. And you've approved multiple different allocations against. a variety of pharmacies and producers. And here, the Washington State AGOs, the Washington State Attorney General's Office, presented a new opioid settlement that is the state and and will receive one hundred and forty nine point five million dollars from Johnson and Johnson for its activities and contributing to the opioid crisis. As part of that settlement, local governments like Covington will receive up to sixty one point six seven million. And that will be spread out amongst all the jurisdictions according to the same formula that has been used for all other distributions. The one thing to keep in mind with, or two things to keep in mind with this are, one, if not all, the local governments that are able to participate, do end up participating, then the shared amount will be significantly lower or might not be approved at all. And the second thing to keep in mind is that oh, oh, excuse me. And the second thing is that there's, this will release all claims and, and create a waiver for us if we wanted to potentially sue Johnson and Johnson in the future. So this is our way of contributing to the settlement to move forward and waiving our rights to bring a future suit related to this issue. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody have any questions for Mark? All right, thank you. So before us is the potential to authorize the city manager to execute the Johnson and Johnson Participation Form in substantial form as that presented. Their motion to approve.
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded. Christina, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure, we've signed quite a few of these, it sounds like. Or they're very familiar, but this one looks the best so far, depending on how many sign up. Somebody has to pay for it for the damage done and this won't even come close. So I am in support of that.
Thank you, Christina. Debbie, would you like to speak to your second?
No, thank you.
Does anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Okay, seeing nobody raise their hand, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute the Johnson and Johnson Participation Form in substantial form as that presented. All those in favor state aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Next is new business item number eight. Authorize the return of, I'm gonna have a problem with this, but authorize the return of grant funds with the Puget Sound Regional Council, PSRC, for right of way funding for the SR five sixteen and seven way intersection improvements project known as CIP one zero six three in the amount of one million sixty nine thousand dollars.
So moved.
A motion to move, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the return of a PSRC grant for the right of way acquisition funds in the amount of one million sixty nine thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand in city reserve funds as a local match. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
We just couldn't meet these deadlines. It was money that has not been spent, money that's just sitting there waiting to be spent. It's really easy to send it back and we're, and we're still looking for funding for this and we're going to get the, get this done eventually, so.
Thank you, Joe. Christina, would you like to speak to your second? Oh, Beth.
Oh, no, no.
Who was the second?
Was me. And yeah. Turning money. Yeah, no, I, I, I hear you and, and I have similar reservations, but yeah, obviously if we're having difficulty doing the work, you know, just makes sense to, to return the funds and, and see additional funding in the future, so.
Thank you, Sean. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? While it's hard to get grant funding for road projects, PSRC did extend this one time for us. And it's being held up because Washington State Department of Transportation is continuing to do a corridor study which will run beyond these funds that are available. So we are basically required to send the funds back, so, but we will reapply. All right. With that, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the return of a PSRC grant for the right of way acquisition funds in the amount of one million sixty nine thousand dollars and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in city reserve funds as local match. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Bob, thank you for a great presentation.
Good one.
Thank you.
Show up and smile.
All right.
What do you want?
See, it's that winning smile, got it, huh? All right, that concludes all of our new business. Moving into future agenda items, this, we have a meeting, our next meeting is on May fourteenth, three weeks. We have a joint study session with our Economic Development League Council and the Chamber with our meeting at seven PM. This council wished to see anything on a future agenda. All right, let's move into council staff comments. Adam?
Mr. Mayor and council, we'll have a, we're participating in a DEA drug takeback Saturday at Walmart from ten to two. So if you have prescription drugs, illegal drugs, prescription drugs, bring those in. And we will take those and dispose of them for you.
Okay. Walmart, at Walmart, ten to two, this Saturday.
That's it.
Thanks, Adam. Ethan?
Just appreciate the proclamations tonight, nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. Dawn is not on. Selena?
I have nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Selena. Casey, Casey on? Nope. Mark?
There's no executive session tonight, for real. And no further comment. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Regan?
I just want to thank Bob for being here tonight.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, he was already giving a really nice, long presentation, so. No, nothing to me, Mayor, thank you.
Thanks, Regan. Krista?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Nothing.
Jennifer?
Just thank you for allowing me to attend virtually. I've been ill, so this was a way to still participate, but in a safe way that did not give you all my germs and to be able to put my head down as needed, so thank you.
Well, we hope you feel better soon, Jennifer.
I am definitely getting there now. Now I'm on the, on the up and up. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie?
Thank you. I just wanted to share that I'm continuing to get positive feedback on the TBD tax proposal as we go out and meet and speak with residents. So that's encouraging. Last week, when Regan and I met with Maple Hills HOA, while they said that there was only one thing they wanted us to talk about, which was the TBD, there were a lot of questions and a lot of raising the hand in chat. And I happened to see that property manager the next evening at my HOA meeting and told her that that was kind of difficult for us to to manage in a, in a really useful way. It ran them late, it ran us late. If I had been there by myself, I would have been hard pressed to answer a lot of those questions. So maybe we'll see a little bit of improvement next time. Tomorrow, Kim Schreier is in town. She's visiting the storehouse for a tour. And that is because Jennifer spoke at the forty seventh District Legislative Meeting, Town Hall, and spoke about food insecurity and it piqued Kim's interest. So honored to be able to tour her tomorrow. And then speaking of Jennifer, I believe everybody has seen the announcement that she is indeed leaving the storehouse on May fourth. So it's a great opportunity for her. We're very proud of what she's done, proud and grateful for what she's done at the storehouse. And we know that she'll go on to do a lot for a much bigger audience than just Covington. We are working on a transition plan and just rest assured, you've got board members that have the back and we'll get it all done.
Thank you, Derek.
Thanks.
Sean?
Just a couple of things. Dub tailing on Debbie's announcement about Representative Kim Schreier. She'll also be tomorrow night at the old Tohoma High School. What is that called now? Maple Hills? Middle school for a town hall on wildfire starts at five thirty. Representative Schreier will be there. Sean Kelly from Maple Valley, Chief Carson from the RFA and myself and answering questions about how to prepare for potential wildfires and how communities like Covington and Maple Valley can better mitigate against potential wildfires. So I'm looking forward to that. And then the other thing out, so these are related to the last RFA meeting. There'll also be a teddy bear clinic coming up on May eighteenth. So if you have a stuffed animal that needs to be checked out, it will be at Station seventy four from ten AM to one PM. And the first four hundred kids that show up, they can get free teddy bear. So like I said, May eighteenth, Station seventy four, ten AM to one PM, so. That's it. Thanks, Sean.
Beth?
Speaking of storehouse on Saturday, May tenth, May eleventh is the National Stamp Out Hunger Event. And I know that a lot of folks have received an email asking to sign up for two hour shifts to help out with that. It's one of their biggest collections. So just as a reminder, if you're out in the community, let folks know about that. And we have our council cleanup, street cleanup that morning too. So I'm looking forward to getting out and rolling up sleeves and helping to make our city shine. A lot of fun stuff coming up, but I don't have another JRC meeting until the end of May, so anything to be updated there, I'll go.
Thank you, Beth. Christina?
Thank you for saving the best for last. No, we recently had we recently had a skip meeting this last Friday and it was mentioned that there is intent to go on a field trip, get a large bus and take the port of directors to the facilities that are currently under construction and have been bought. Two are in Buren and one is in another location. I can't remember right now, or it's being worked on. And I am really excited to see the work that, you know, Covington had a chunk. But by the way, I know we're a small city, but for Skip, we're really large because we're one of like three or four cities that are even contributing at all. So it's, it's important. We have some oomph there. So I'm excited to see what the result of our chipping in is bringing to the community. Oh, yeah. And I, tomorrow, the rain starts. I hope you all are excited, but I really enjoyed today.
Thank you, Christina. Looking forward to hearing back on the tour. I just have a couple of things. Like Katie said, the Kentwood Governance Day is this Friday. It is a drop in event. You don't have to be there any certain time. And Krista did send out to each of us what hours are available. This Friday is the Arbor Day event at Jenkins Creek Elementary. And Ethan, are we meeting at the elementary or the park or you'll send us information?
If you're planning on attending, email me and I'll forward it to Sarah who's organizing it. I don't know the details of where people are meeting.
Okay.
All right. Are you planning on attending, Mayor?
Yeah, I was reading the proclamation.
Okay. I'll make sure you get the information done. Why don't we just, if you want to send that to me, I'll get it out to council. I, I'm pretty sure it's meeting at the school. And then we'll walk over to the park. We'll confirm that and get it to you. That works.
Okay, thank you. And then I know it's a couple of weeks away, but May fourth is the Covington Makers Market, which will be at Real Life Church. It is expanded bigger than it was last fall. It'll be a large event, very popular. And I think some of the stuff is already sold out, the spaces. Arts Commission will be there. I know Carlo will be there and several others. So looking forward to that. And I believe that same night is the Rotary Auction, which I actually get to attend, so I'm excited for that.
May the fourth be with you.
Yeah, I have, well, I still have that shirt that Sean Kelly told everybody to wear, except him. So I don't think I have it back from my daughter. I'm, that'll be good. Okay. Our second of two public comment periods, speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants permission to speak, press unmute in Zoom or dial star six to unmute by phone. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council? Don't all rush up. And anybody online wishing to address council, please raise your hand.
Yeah.
Seeing nobody approach the podium or raise their hand, this meeting is adjourned at eight twenty five.